Adrian N. Brightfelder, City Clerk, you are hereby directed to call a special session of the City Council to be held on Monday, December 18th, 2023 at 5:30 PM in the historic Federal Building for the purpose of conducting a work session on the Waste Minimization Annual Report.
Thank you. Good evening and welcome to a special session of the Dubuque City Council for December 18th, 2023. As a reminder to viewers and listeners, due to the nature of tonight's meeting topic, public input is not accepted. However, you may contact the City Council directly from the city's webpage at www.cityofdubuque.org/councilcontacts. Attendance for the session is as follows: Mayor Kavanaugh.
Here.
Council members Farber. Thank you. Jones.
Here.
Resnick.
Here.
Rousell.
Here.
Sprank.
Here.
Wethel.
Here.
City Manager Van Milligan, I see you walking in, and City Attorney Brumwell. Thank you. Our work session topic is Waste Minimization Annual Report Presentation. I will turn it over to Public Works Director Ariel Swift.
Good evening. Ariel Swift, Public Works Director here. Before I turn it over to Jake to do the presentation for you, I just want to say thank you. We were approved for recurring funding to do these reports, to have an external expert pull the data together, and create a benchmark year from fiscal year 2022 and then an additional 2023 to gauge our metrics and where we started from and where we are now. And I'm pretty excited about what we've found so far. So, without further ado, Jake?
Thanks, Ariel. City Council, Mayor Kavanaugh, good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you all tonight. My name is Jake Jansen. I'm the Resource Management Supervisor, so I manage our city's curbside collection programs. And I'm excited tonight to talk about something that I feel is pretty important: Waste Minimization. And so, really, yeah, like as Ariel said, we'll be digging into these two reports, sharing some data, all around three goals. And so that will kind of be the framework. And we'll talk about the goals, how we're doing on the goals. And then from there, we're going to move to what we did in fiscal year 2023 that may have had some impacts on those goals, and then move to next step. So, it should be about 30 to 40 minutes. And, you know, stop me if you see anything glaring that you want to talk about. Otherwise, we'll have some time at the end for questions. And Amanda Erickson, who's with HDR Consulting Firm, who's here tonight, she's the expert. So, really lucky to have her in support, and she'll be here for answering questions as well. So with that, I'll get started. So I wanted to just begin by kind of outlining the four different service activities that our solid waste division out of Public Works provides. So, we have our trash collection service, which operates under a pay-as-you-throw program. So with our four different cart sizes, the larger the cart, the more costs the customer, all in an effort to try and incentivize diversion. And we have six garbage routes, five days a week, servicing all households within the city limits up to multifamily units of six. We do service a few more, but all multifamily sixes and below, sixplexes, are required to receive our service. And so, with that, we also have the service activity of large item pickups. So this is all the material outside of the carts. We call it bulk material. And there's a lot of different materials under this category. We probably pick up something new every single day. You're like, okay, well, take that to the next disposal site. And they all go to different areas, and we have different trucks taking them to different locations. And I'll build on that here in a second. And then we have our recycling collection service, where all of our customers get unlimited recycling. We want to incentivize recycling. So we have our 18-gallon bins and our 96-gallon blue recycling carts. And all those materials go to Dittmer Recycling off of Radford Road. And then we have organic collection, which is our yard debris and our food scraps. And all those materials all go into the same truck and then taken to the Dubuque Metropolitan Area Solid Waste Agency's composting facility. And so, those are the four areas, but I present these all to kind of chalk it up to talk about the two kind of categories. So, you can see that trash and large item pickups, the majority of those materials, well, for all of those except a few things I'll talk in a second, for large item pickups, all go to our landfill, and then recycling or yard waste are all recycled or composted for organics. And so it can have a new life, right? But, kind of, want to make one little caveat. So the majority of our large item pickups are like furnitures and extra bags of trash. Those are all landfilled. But we do see TVs, computers, anything with the cords are all really important materials that we do not want to be seen in our landfill. So again, we send a separate truck to get it to the appropriate location, tires, appliances, metal materials like grills. And this has kind of been something evolving over time, but now we're a lot more efficient with different trucks to make it happen. So, we're really proud of that. So, kind of moving on to our goals, so really looking, we started this process when I hopped on with the team in February of 2022. We started working with HDR, met a couple times a month, and looked at our Imagine Dubuque 2037 Plan, our Climate Action Plan, and started to say, okay, what do we want to measure? What are the metrics? And then really start being really reflective on how we're doing on these goals. And so, these goals are, number one, to increase the overall waste diversion rate, which includes our recycling, yard waste, and food scraps. Goal number two, to reduce our per customer annual waste disposal based on landfill waste and total annual waste generation. And then the third and final goal is to incorporate greenhouse gas reduction initiatives into waste minimization planning using Warm Analysis, which is a mechanism through the EPA. It factors a lot of different data together to kind of just come with like a score out of greenhouse gas emissions. I'll explain that when I get to it, because it's a little complex, and I'm still trying to fully understand it, but I'll do my best. But anyways, these reports are really ultimately be something that we're looking at each year. That's public data that we can really work with the community to say, how are we doing? And what are we going to do to keep continuing to minimize waste? And before I go into the goals, some really quick data on the amount of customers we service. So, between fiscal year 2023 and fiscal year 2022, our city's population technically went down from 59,667 to 58,873. But our households, which is a more important number, is our total customers went from 20,466 up to 20,658. So, we serviced 200 more households with the same staff. And when you think about that, you know, 200 more households, when you're talking about waste, is impactful, because we're picking up weekly garbage and recycling and yard organics as well from each of these households. All right. So, going into the goal as far as diversion. So in fiscal year 2022, so if you're following with me here, in the dark blue there, we collected about 17,000 tons of material from the curb. That's everything. And of landfill material, about 13,000, or of that 17,000, about 13,000 of that was landfill material. And then in the light blue is what we would call diverted material. So our recycling, about 2,800, that was all materials that went to Dittmer Recycling, your paper, cardboard, and metal, and plastics, number ones through fives. Organic collection tonnage was about 1,000, and then you can see the kind of the total for TVs, appliances, and tires. So we add those together. Our total diversion rate for this year, that 3,940 divided by our total, is about 23%. So that's our diversion rate. Now, going to fiscal year 2023, we see a little bit of an improvement. So, we actually collected less total tonnage by about 500 tons. And a lot of that decrease came from our landfill tonnage. We saw a little bit of a dip in recycling tonnage. I'll maybe talk into some reasons why that may be later on in the presentation. We did see an uptick in organic collection. And I want to just pause to say that while this looks like a good thing, organic collection is really seasonal-based. So, when you have more rain, you're going to collect a lot more yard debris. So, obviously, we want to boost our organic collection, specifically food waste. A lot of that total tonnage increase is probably coming from yard debris. So just a caveat there. But in total, our diversion rate went up by a percentage. So that achieved our annual goal of trying to increase by a percentage each year. So we're a little bit above that goal, and at least it's going in the right direction, but we got some room to grow there. So before I go into the next goal, I think this is just a good kind of storyline to see how we're doing for landfill tonnage. So you can see all the way back to fiscal '18, we were on a steady increase. And in fiscal year 2021, we hit a peak at about 13,500 tons of landfill tonnage for City of Dubuque. And, you know, you can probably guess why that may be. It was, most communities, you saw their peak there because we were experiencing a global pandemic. So, now we're going in the right direction, and hopefully it continues to go that way. And in fiscal year '21, it was our peak. Hopefully it stays there, but we're going to keep seeing. So, the next goal is kind of looking at a customer per capita basis of landfill waste generation. So, what that looks like is you're looking at the amount of customers we service, and then you divide that by our landfill tonnage. So, in fiscal year 2022, now we're talking about per household, per pound. So, you're seeing in fiscal year 2022, the average household was producing about 1,298 pounds of trash. But we're seeing a little bit of a positive trend there. In fiscal year 2023, it went down by about 70 pounds. So every household went down about 70 pounds of trash. So that's a good sign. And then for recycling, we saw 385 per household, an increase of about seven pounds to the next fiscal year. So, both of the directions are going in the right way. And so that actually achieved our goal of about that 1% each year, but we were at 2.4% of a waste generation reduction. So, another positive sign. So, the next, kind of continuing on this goal, this is what, after the reports were finalized and I looked at it, this was by far the most surprising element that I thought, this is something we should celebrate as a community. So, now we're factoring, the average household is about 2.5 people per home. And you use that data, the national average of solid waste generation per week is about 28 pounds of recycling and 59 pounds of trash. So add those together, about 90 pounds of solid waste. You're in Dubuque. We're at about 7.5 pounds of recycling and 23 pounds of landfill materials. So you add those up, we're, the average, the national average of solid waste generation is at 90, and we're around 30. While if we're going to set 30 pounds per home at the curb, you'd wish it all could be diverted. But we all know the principle of reduce, reuse, recycle. As what the numbers are showing, we're doing a pretty good job of reducing and reusing. Now, I saw it, and I'm like, well, okay, maybe it's a Midwest thing, maybe we're more frugal. Why is this for the city? And it took a little bit, but you look at how we actually compare to our neighbors. So, this is actually looking at pounds of solid waste, so landfill trash, landfill and recycling, add those together, per person, per day. So, me individually, on average, I produce 1.85 pounds per day, okay? But the state average is 4.8 pounds per day, and the Wisconsin average is 6.6 pounds per day. So, you know, that is pretty significant. And I think, you know, you can think about it a lot of different ways and why that may be. I'm thinking it's likely because we have a pretty historic pay-as-you-throw program, but it's hard to know. But I think maybe even some more anecdotal evidence here is, working with HDR, they, you know, they've done a few ride-alongs with us, and they call our set-outs cute, like our 35-gallon carts are rare. And when I go to conferences, when I was just talking about this big deployment, and it was this big mountain, and it wasn't done yet, they're like, so what's it going to look like? And I said, well, we're going to issue 35-gallon carts to about 60% of our community, and people were shocked. And I got even more and more nervous. Is this going to work? And it is working. Like 60% of our community are using 35-gallon carts, and it reflects in this data that we just don't generate that much solid waste. So, again, I do think this is something to celebrate, and it's unique to our city across the state. All right. So, goal number three is talking about greenhouse gas, and talking about how greenhouse gas production and our entire solid waste operation. So it really factors tonnage data, and I'll present that here in a second. But we're really specifically looking at distance to disposal sites. So, our big refuse trucks, they get really bad miles per gallon, it's like two. So, it's really good if your disposal sites are local and near, and a lot of communities don't have that benefit. Okay, so another factor is the presence of a landfill gas recovery system. So, know that methane production comes at most landfills, and it's extremely potent greenhouse gas. And so, we're lucky enough to have a gas collection system to manage a lot of that harmful greenhouse gas. And then also precipitation rate is also a factor here. So, rain can impact decane, which also impacts the production of methane. Okay. So then, it also factors in our totals for tonnage. So you can see, you know, you've got all of our totals for fiscal year 2023. And so Warm, so this tool out of the EPA, basically uses the baseline scenario. So if you basically collected all of the materials out of one cart and took it all to the landfill, that's baseline. But we don't do that here in our community. We have recycling program and composting of all these different materials. Factors in all these factors, and it comes up with these results. So if we did the baseline, we would be emitting about 1,000 metric tons of CO2 per year for our entire solid waste operation. So that's basically the same number between fiscal year '22 and fiscal year 2023. But because we have all those factors of a close disposal site, we have a gas recovery system at the landfill, because we recycle and compost, we're at a negative number. So, you first see that, and you're like, there's no way that our solid waste collection system is like a carbon sink or net negative. And this took me a little bit to understand, but it actually is more of like a scale. So Warm, as it exists now, is at zero. And so, if we landfill everything, we'd be up in the thousand number. But because we do all these other things, we're technically really good on the scale, and we want to keep going in that direction. The EPA has talked about moving that scale a little bit, so it's easier to see at first glance. But what I really think is the most takeaway here is the impact of composting and recycling. It's thinking about it like upstream in the production, that we're not taking more raw materials from our earth to make more materials. So there's that much of a net environmental impact by composting and recycling. All right. So that was a lot of data. I'm going to start talking about a little bit more fun things, about what we've did to our operations to try and improve our waste minimization efforts. So, solid waste collection is a service that I feel is really unique. You know, we really rely on, across the country, of our customers doing their part to put out their trash the right way, so it's safely to be collected automatically. It's important for the sorting of materials, like it's a service that's not like turning on the water, and it's good. Like, there's a two-way street here. And top that off, in Dubuque, we have a little bit of a complex curbside collection program, all in good intention to minimize waste. But you think about it, if you're moving from Madison to Dubuque, and you might think, well, I put my extra bag of trash, and they did that in Madison, and they didn't pick it up here. Well, we didn't pick it up because we require you to put a green sticker that costs $1.50, and you can get that locally in the community. So, we're really cognitive of the fact that we have to continually educate, continually engage with our customers, because, you know, it's not all assumed information. So ways we do that is we're out in the community, like the farmer's market. We try to get into schools when we're able to, but we also try to do it on a wide scale as well. And so some of the things we do is, we work with our Public Information Office to post on our different social media platforms through the city. So, in fiscal year 2022, we went from, we had 18 posts for the year and went up to 25 posts. Our website is like our hub. It has all of our information on it. And we want folks to get to that location, and that went up from about 1,100 views to about 1,200, so about 100 more views per month. And then, our waste search tool is something that I'm really passionate about, and it is effective because essentially it's on our app, and it's on our website. And if folks don't know how to properly dispose them of material, they can go in there, type it in, and it gives you really clear instructions on what to do about that. And so, we actually saw about 3,000 more views in fiscal year 2023, which was the highest that it's been for the five years we've had this tool. But what's the really cool thing about this is it's giving us as a team great data to know, okay, the top search tool is TVs. So we need to cater our engagement to talk about how do you properly dispose TVs? So it's information for us. But why we may have seen an increase in some of these metrics is we were really visible in the community in fiscal year 2023, and we were able to equip our carts or infrastructure with decals. Like on our trash carts, there's a QR code getting them to our website that has our waste search tool on it. And then our sticker for our recycling sticker, which we received funding through a waste minimization grant through the agency, to put stickers on our recycling carts and a majority of our recycling bins. And why these stickers are really good is it's convenient. It's right there on the source where folks can see, oh, this is what's supposed to go on this bin. And again, kind of going to that point, is waste is local. I could be in Madison, and you can't put your glass in your curbside bin. In Dubuque, we ask you to take it to a drop-off location. So think about Airbnbs, new folks coming to our community. This is really good information right at the source, and so we're proud of that. The next piece I want to talk about is a routing software investment called Rubicon. And it has immensely improved our operation, allowing us to go from as paper-dependent to electronic as we can be. But as it pertains to waste minimization, it's really been another creative way for us to interact with our customers. And so essentially, it equips all of our solid waste drivers with a iPhone, where they can really record what they're seeing in the field with pictures. And then as a dispatch team, we're automatically able to send emails with clear instructions to try and educate the customer and meet the customer where they're at to try and improve for the next week. So some of those, so actually, this software took place in December of fiscal year 2023, and we were able to send out about 4,000 automatic emails to our customers, kind of looking like this, of just, hey, this is what we observed, this is the proper way to do it, here's our number or our website for more information. So in particular, we're able to actually really track like extra materials outside of the cart and have a little bit of accountability of leaving it. In the past, if you can imagine, before the carts, you go to a multifamily home, and you're supposed to be servicing six houses, but there's a mountain of trash, and it's definitely more than that. But whose trash am I supposed to take? It all looks the same way. Now it's really standardized, and we can be really clear about what the rules are, so we're fair about it. And I think that's probably a large reason why we saw a little bit of decline in our total landfill tonnage. Another big one is large item materials out at the curb without an appointment. We have an appointment system, so we can properly bill the customer through their utility bill. And you all have probably seen them, and sometimes you see a couch in the right of way, doesn't look good. Now we can have a lot more efficient way to track that. And as a dispatch team, take care of it by calling the property owner and get it picked up as quickly as possible. So, not only helping minimize waste, but keeping our community clean as well. Just keeping track of where we've been, you know, it's an issue you see all over the country as far as you were just in that neighborhood, or you were already at the landfill and get a call, you missed my garbage. Well, we were there at 8 o'clock. No, I had it out at 6 o'clock. So, we want to be, we want to be, work with folks, and not everyone forgets sometimes. And we're able, we go back a lot, but at the very least, it allows us to save, be a little bit more efficient, so that we're consistent. Carts being left at the curb, again, this is another thing we can track through this technology. I'll breeze through these. And then carts being turned the wrong way, they got to be turned the right way for us to safely collect it with an automated arm. So, another thing we can contract. And then also contaminated recycling bins and carts. There, you can see an example there. You got some snow, and you got some bags in there. The driver can actually say, bags are in your bin, and then it's a customized message. And you'd be surprised that, you know, customers are saying, oh, there's my recycling bin. Oh, I did something wrong. I get an email every day saying, I didn't know that. Well, now you do. So it is improving behavior, and I think this technology has allowed us to be a lot more efficient in our communication. So another metric that we're tracking is the number of service calls that Public Works is receiving. And the majority of calls we're getting are solid waste-related. And so, you can see the uptick here from 17,000 in fiscal year 2022 to 19,000 in fiscal year 2023. That probably is going to be our peak. We were very visible, again, like I said. Reason being, we were issuing city-issued carts. And so, we're proud of this, this opportunity to talk to our customers. I mean, think about that. We service a little over 20,000, and not all of these are unique customer calls. But our team is really good at meeting folks where they're at, and you can do that over a phone call. You can hear, oh, this is where they're going. I got to bring it down to this level and really start talking about some of the basics of our program. And this is why we really appreciate the ability to take phone calls. A lot of data, so bear with me, we're moving along here. But, so this is an update on our trash carts deployment numbers. And this, I'm going to kind of get the point across about waste minimization here. So, essentially, in fiscal year 2022, we weren't done with the deployment of carts yet. But we had about 70%, of customers still waiting for their 35-gallon cart. So we add those together, but 70% plus the 4% of customers that had their 35-gallon cart. So 74% of our customers utilizing the smallest volume option that we provide. Now, in fiscal year 2023, at the end of it, we weren't completely done with the project. But you add those up, there's still about 16% of folks still waiting for a 35-gallon cart. So you add 16 plus 52, 68%. So, a little bit of decline. I think the main point here, I want to say, is it's a little bit of right sizing the cart. We want the trash to be contained, and now we have a standardized cart that makes it easier. But hopefully, we can start reaching out to folks that are paying around $29 a month for that 96-gallon cart. A lot of that materials could be recycled. So, we want to be able to think about downsizing them to save them money and help out with our waste minimization goals. Large item pickup data, really quick here, just want to show you that in fiscal year 2022, we did about 3,300 appointments. This was the most we've ever done before. And it went even higher in fiscal year 2023 to 3,768. It's a really popular service. And I think I just want to say that, you know, again, we did more large item pickups, more materials, and we had more customers, yet our landfill tonnage went down. So I think it's probably fair to speculate that household garbage went down a little bit, even with these metrics that we're presenting. So, I want to talk really briefly about the Waste Characteristics Study that the Department of Natural Resources does. It's done every five years, and it's really critical information that's showing you what's actually in our landfill. Essentially, they go across the state to different landfills, have a team that pulls out different materials, and show what is in the landfill. So they did it in 2017, 2022. And what they show you here is that you're actually able to look at the state top five materials and how it pertains to specifically City of Dubuque trucks. So we have that data. So, the dark blues, the state average, the pinkish-red are Dubuque's average over these two times, these five years of the study. And our top five materials correlate with the top five of the state average. But what is the most eye-popping to me is our top material of food waste is at 27%. And the average is that, for the state average, is around 18%. So, that's a little concerning, but I also think it could be an opportunity, because we have a diversion stream, right? So imagine if we could take 27% of our landfill tonnage and divert it, at least it's not 27% diapers. Diapers are, probably should be landfilled, right? But food waste can be reused into compost. So, it could be an opportunity if you look at that way, but still, we're different than the state average there. Last data slide, and then I got next steps. All right. So, our same kind of principle, this is an internal study that we do each year out of Public Works, where we take 50 set-outs a day of recycling containers. Then we bring it back to the garage, we sort it out into different categories, and it's the same categories that Dittmer Recycling uses to sort them out, and then bail them, and then send them out across the Midwest. And we use these percentages based off of the 50/50 split that we have in agreement with Dittmer Recycling. Okay. So we did this in 2016, 2017, 2018, and then there was a gap, but we did it two times this past, or in fiscal year 2023. So here's the different categories. They have some interesting names, just the way they are. But OCC stands for cardboard. Old newsprint is basically all your paper, so anything other than like napkins. But really, the main point I want to say here is you can see that in 2016, so that dark blue line under old newsprint was 50, at one point, 50% of all we recycled was paper. That was 50% of the tonnage. But now, we just did these recent studies, did it twice in 2022, and you see that it's closer to around that 30% mark. So, I think we probably could all make the guess, there's just less paper being used. People are transmitting information electronically, which is a good thing with reduce, reuse, right? You could make the statement that, well, if there's less paper, then total tonnage might go down. I'm not comfortable making that statement, but I do know that materials are changing, and that's what this is ultimately showing. You're seeing that, I mean, think about it, like Amazon, there's more Amazon boxes coming, and our recycling team sees that, you know? So, this is just a healthy thing we want to do frequently to make sure that we're accurately getting a representation of what's being recycled. All right. So, next steps. So, I think, you know, if waste minimization is important to our community, I think we need to really start thinking long-term on how we're going to minimize our waste. You know, I think Dubuque, I mean, we're obviously doing something right with not a lot of materials at the curb. But wouldn't it be cool if 80% of what we were throwing away was able to be reused again? You know, I think we can be one of, have one of the higher diversion rates in the state, maybe the country. And to do that, it's going to take long-term planning. And to do that, it's going to take long term planning. And it's going to take, I mean, we will lead the charge out of Public Works, but it's going to take community input to make it happen. And I think something I'm very passionate about making happen, and I think it can be there, but it's going to take some planning. Something we were able to do this fiscal year, which we're really grateful for you all approving the funding to hire a waste minimization intern. They've been working out of our office for a few months now. Carly Weiss, she's a Lawrence College student, and she's doing excellent work, but she's actually looking specifically at local data on routes. So like, what, what kind of intervention can we do on this route, this demographic that might work there, but might not work at this part of Dubuque? So I, we might learn nothing, but that might be, or we might learn what might not work, but that's knowing what that doesn't work, you might need to try something else. So it's little small things before you bring it to scale, and I'm excited to show you all that result if we get there. I've hammered this point, just the importance of outreach, so I'll keep going. Couple last things I want to say is, probably the best thing we can do to really increase our diversion rate is expanding our recycling cart program. So beyond the great benefits and safety of these carts provide to our drivers that work extremely hard, our bins are, what I should say is, they are, they work in a lot of places, but they, there's a lot of times when you show up to a stop that has a plumped yellow bin of recycling, and then you look at their garbage cart and there's recyclables in it. So that customer obviously knows to recycle, but they don't have the capacity. And in my mind, I think that's a little bit failure, like we, we need to be able to provide the capacity to our customers that want to recycle. And so there's a lot of research on this because most other communities have switched from bins to carts before we have, and they see like upwards of 25 to 50% increase in recycling tonnage, 25 to 50% just by switching from bins to carts. Like, it's, it's a huge win. And the good news is, is there is, there's potentially federal dollars and there's nonprofit dollars out there that would help in the purchasing of these carts. So I really think that while just putting carts out there doesn't mean, we got it, we're going to have a great diversion rate. There's so much work with trying to reduce contamination, but we gotta make sure we're providing the capacity for folks who need it. Kind of on that point, our food scrap recycling program, it's hard not to look at that landfill data and say, okay, we have a food scrap recycling program, but why so much food scraps going into the landfill? And we have a historic food scrap program, like it's one of the first in the nation, but it has plateaued over the last five years at about 500 customers. Reason being, we really couldn't expand it because of a lot of regulation changes with our composting facility. And it seems like that's going in the right path where maybe we could expand this, we have some carts on order so we can get this energy going, but it's, it needs a revamp. And I think I use that word tactically because it can't just, a lot of folks don't know about it, and I think we gotta make sure that we, if this is important, we're willing to revamp and reinvest. And then two, just the importance of reducing reuse. This, there's some really cool ideas that HDR put together, but for the sake of time, I'll, I'll end it there, and I'm sure you might have some questions. So thank you for listening to me. Yeah, thanks.
Jake, thank you very much. This was a great presentation to, I know I have some questions here that have been generated through it and really, some really good information. And we appreciate the data, so thank you very much for feeding that to us in that way. It's, it's very helpful. So I'll open it up for questions here. Ms. Russell?
Thank you. That was a great presentation, wonderful information. And my question is, as the holidays approach, and we're all unwrapping everything under the Christmas tree, can you kind of give us some guidance as to which of those, like gift wrap and things, which goes in the recycling and what goes in the trash? Can you kind of give us some guidance?
Sure, yes. So most wrapping paper is not recyclable, so it has that wax container, wax level on it. And this is why all waste is local. It may be recyclable someplace else, but with our processor, DITMIR Recycling does not want wrapping paper. Now, if it's like, like, like a grocery bag sack, that is recyclable, if you reused it, which would be something I would encourage. But all cardboard, that's really important to get into your recycling containers. So as you're unwrapping your Christmas presents, that's something we want to get into our recycling stream.
Thank you.
Quick follow up to that question, you said that there's a way that's really easy based on what you just described to us, for people to find that information out if you're not standing there to answer that question. What is the way that they can do that?
Yes, so we have our waste search tool, so I'd encourage everybody to download the Rethink Waste app. Not only has a way for you to just type in what material and where it should go, but also can remind you of your collection day, schedule a large item pickup, there's a lot in there, it's very convenient. If you don't want to download the app, just go to our website, all the information's right there.
I still use that like once a month, just because I still have questions when I'm sitting there looking at something.
There's a lot to it. The information's right there, though.
Yeah, absolutely. Mike, go ahead.
You're the remedial group, so.
Right, I'm just needing, needing air to help on that one. Anybody else? Yeah, go ahead, Mr. Frank.
Thanks, Jake, for all that information. You'd mentioned about the food waste program, about how we're kind of still looking into revamping that. Is the reason like I got away from it was because we got rid of like carcasses and bones and meat? Is that possibility like that's going to come back again for folks? Because I think that would interest folks to come back, so.
Yeah, I don't know if I can answer that. I mean, it's, it's, there's a lot of parties at stake there to make that decision, but I mean, I'm a believer, we can, can do it if we can make, as far as getting more participants, we gotta find a way to make it more convenient. So like, being able to scrape your plate and put your meat and dairy in there, that would make it more convenient. Try and find ways, I call it the ick factor, trying to reduce the ick. So if you could use a compostable bag or really talking about using like a brown bag so you don't have to smell the smell of food waste, those are the types of things, but how we structure the facility, I can't speak to that.
Mr. Mayor. Yeah, go ahead, Mr. Trump.
Yeah, it sounds like it's a state regulatory issue on the what.
Yeah.
And I hope they fix that, because I probably have put a cow or two in that pile over the years, not knowing it. But it's been since its inception, it's not something new that they don't allow meat and dairy. Yeah, it sounds like the science doesn't support the DNR's position on it. It sounds like meat byproducts go in, or meat remains go into that pile and come out just, just beautiful. So hopefully that will change. I did want, just want to make a quick point that the Solid Waste Agency has some money that we do allow in waste minimization grants for any, any organization that wants to do something or has an idea, they should apply for those grants and say, hey, we can, we can minimize waste if we had a few thousand dollars to buy this or to do that. And usually have money left over every year, and that's kind of a shame. It's good for next year because we can roll it over, but we'd much rather see some good programs out there. So from the Solid Waste Agency, please take a look at that, folks. If you've, you've got a good idea to make an event better by making it zero waste, we can help. If you apply for and get one of our grants, if you need some hardware to improve how your solid waste is separated at your facility, we can help.
Mr. Trump, yeah.
Thank you. Yes, I was hoping that the HDR representative might talk about the methodology used, because I mean, the, I mean, when Dubuque is compared to others, there were some quite startling differences, and I'm wondering if we're comparing apples to apples. I know it's, it's, it's difficult between rural and I'll say cosmopolitan area like Dubuque, Iowa. But I mean, could you tell us about the methodology used when you compiled this data and came back with these numbers?
Sure. Hi, I'm Amanda Erickson with HDR, so we have a team of solid waste planners, both locally and nationally, that helped out on this project. We used a lot of really specific, great data that the city has, because you do all of your own hauling, you have great tonnage and customer data, so we could really get into the specifics here. We used regional data for comparisons, so like Jake mentioned, that DNR study looked at a lot of different facilities in the state of Iowa that were used for comparisons as well. And then it was a lot of year over year comparison too, so looking at the same data from 2022 to 23 to make some of those comparisons.
Would you happen to have any other city data, like Iowa City or other cities that are known for, you know, their recycling and these kind of programs? Do we have any other city data to compare ourselves to?
I know that we used Cedar Rapids for comparison because they also were part of that state study where they did the landfill characterization, so I think we used some of theirs. But as far as like collections for like per customer tonnage, that was specific to Dubuque and then looking at the national averages. So some of those slides that had like with the national average household, much of that is based on the recycling partnerships, they do a lot, it's a nonprofit, they do a lot of research related to waste generation and recycling nationally. So kind of a mix of local and national comparison.
Thank you very much. And, you know, another thing maybe you could have talked about is, the, this kind of rate that we do, we don't throw away a lot compared to other people, helps our landfill last a lot longer, and landfills are very expensive. And so it's not only a good thing to do to keep us green here in this area, but it also saves us a lot of green as well with, with that situation. So there's a lot of good news that you brought us, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Wethel.
My question is maybe a little bit in the same vein. I'm interested in how we take the information from businesses and restaurants and equate that into a single person waste. I mean, I'm sure, I'm just curious about the formula.
Yeah, no, I, and I've thought a little bit about this, and if you want to help me out, man, I'll do my best, but it's, it's just those data, like where we're at 1.81 pounds per person per day, that is just residential data, household data, that's not factoring in any commercial data. And so how it compares to this data average of 4.4 pounds per day per person, that is residential data, household, what we're putting at the curb, not what the waste you might be producing when you go to a restaurant or dispose of it at a, when you're walking down the street and there's a public receptacle there. So yeah, that's not factored in, it's just residential household data.
And then do we collect data on, say, specific businesses like restaurants and industry? Is it relates to perishables and?
Yeah, that's, that's a harder one, and this is where waste gets complicated because there's private haulers, so to know what, and we don't do dumpster collection, so any, any of the dumpsters that a business might be paying for, whether maybe it's DITMIR, who's a hauler, we don't have that data. So we could look at national averages, but not specifically unless we reached out to some of the private haulers. But the agency has tonnage data from private haulers, so you can kind of deduce from there, but it's not the customer level, which is what we have from our residential service.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I'm going to follow that question up. Is it basically, is that kind of the standard, or are we an outlier in that? Are other places tracking that better than we are?
I wouldn't say there's anyone like tracking it better than you are. So like hauling wise, this is residential collection, and so a lot of other places, you have your choice of trash haulers who pick up your trash and recycling, and those cities have a harder time getting that granular data because it's up to the haulers. What are they going to share? You know, it's a private business and their data. So as far as data collection, I would say you have as good as it can get because you're doing it yourselves. You know exactly where your trucks and routes look like and what your carts capacity are. So in that sense, I think, yeah, you have really great data. As far as getting at like commercial tonnage and stuff like that, yeah, working with the landfill and kind of looking at that, HDR does a lot of national projects, and so there are ways to kind of like figure out who are your biggest likely generators of food waste, so you can kind of figure that out based on public information. But again, that's kind of just our best guess of, you know, comparing a landfill tonnage to who's likely the biggest generators.
Thank you, thank you. Interesting. Yeah, go ahead.
You all may not be aware of this, but by, by ordinance, residences have to use City of Dubuque trash collection, and they all do. And almost nobody in the business sector uses our trash collection, at least the higher volume folks. Restaurant data, that's all going to a private hauler. Most of them offer recycling bins along, dumpsters alongside their other one and, and usually container for management of greases and oils. But getting at their data is a lot different because, you know, we're as transparent as can be. We know it, we'll share it. They're in business to compete with other companies that provide the same service, and they're quite reasonably less willing to share data on what they're hauling and where it's coming from.
Well, this, I mean, this is an interesting discussion. I have a couple of questions here that I don't think have been asked yet. Your, your topic of expanding recycling carts. So the way we did the trash carts, you talked about how unique that was, you know, we started pretty small, and, and in some ways, I think what we've learned, at least anecdotally, I have, I have no good data like you do, but anecdotally, it seems to me that people became okay with 35 gallon cart when they really recognized what the size of that really looked like. It wasn't as big as they thought it was going to be in the beginning, and it was, it made it a little easier to swallow. Am I right that the only recycling cart we can currently ask for is the giant blue one?
Yeah.
Right, yeah. Which, which I love personally, right? I mean, that's great, but I know a lot of people who would be like, I got no place in my garage for that giant blue cart, I don't want to put it there. When you think about how we might expand that and help us to look ahead, do you see a program that involves multiple size carts to be able to do that? Or what are your thoughts as we, as we look ahead to that?
It's a complicated one. So I would say, yeah, we offered the 96 gallon carts, that was a decision way back with the potential of doing biweekly recycling. I don't recommend that, but I do think it works for a lot of, a lot of families. Now, the recycling partnership, which is a national nonprofit that, one of their big projects is helping fund the transition to recycling carts. They only will fund carts that are 60 gallons and plus more for recycling. And there's a lot of research to show that your tonnage will increase by offering that container size. Now, hearing from community members, a 64 gallon cart, which is our third option for trash carts, would be a lot better than universally distributing 96 gallon carts, but I think there, obviously there are going to be folks that would like it smaller. Now, getting into the science of collection, so if you think a 35 gallon cart, if we offered that for recycling, think of a pizza box, like talking to our crew, that does not work very well. And the 35 gallon carts work well, but they, there are some challenges with that. So my recommendation would be not distributing 35 gallon carts for everyone, so just looking into funding opportunities and size carts that work for everyone, but also works for the, the safety of our crew.
That's, that's helpful. I mean, I appreciate that answer because I think, you know, it, it's not just about what fits in the garage, it's also about what's going to be useful across the board based on the research that we have and the numbers, what the numbers really show us. So I appreciate that, because we would, if, if we were to move forward with something like that, I would imagine we'd be doing it for the purpose of diverting things in the way you've been talking about.
And there's, and there's, you can, program cities, Dubuque is unique, but also distributing trash carts and recycling carts is not unique. And the concern of, that won't fit in my garage, there's programs you can develop to accommodate those that may have an issue with a bigger sized carts, and we're, and we're doing it now. So, and the good thing is a recycling partnership or other, or other, there's research that will help us in that transition, so it's good.
And sticking on that diversion piece, so you're talking about revamping the, the food scrap program, you know, as you, as you think ahead of, I mean, we kind of had some discussion about that, but what might that look like? I mean, is it going to involve, it sounds like the state of Iowa needs to make some changes for that to really happen for us. So it, it involves some advocacy work on our part as a community, maybe working with other communities to try and change the way the state looks at that. But then what else might that look like to be able to expand it? I mean, if you can give us a little bit more of an idea of what, what we could do there.
You know, if, if, if the, if the Dubuque Metropolitan Area Solid Waste Agency facility can take on more food scraps, and with that, you need brown materials to get a good, healthy compost, if that can happen, then we need to find ways to promote participation. So is the dollar a month a barrier, or is that an important thing to keep some like, this is my cart, I'm paying a dollar for it? We could look at some research on that, we could think of maybe an incentive program, but looking at the barriers, and a lot of research shows it's the ick factor of, I don't, how, how can we get beyond that? So like, using like compostable plastic bags to put your food scraps in that, just like you would do for your trash, and putting that into your composting container, it's the same thing, right? But then you got to think about, can the facility get to the right temperature to break down that, that compostable plastic? You got to think about the idea of PFOS of that, that material, forever chemical, I don't even know if I get it, but yeah, so I guess, I think you got to think about reducing barriers, and that, that would be my recommendation.
Any others before we go?
One quick comment. I've never cared for the bins from the standpoint of the potential for worker injury. Every single time someone takes a bin, they're out of the truck, they may be on a slippery surface, they're bending over in bad body posture, there's, there's no, no good way to get that material into the truck with, with the bins. So I hope that we get to a, a cart system for all recycling collections in the not too distant future, and besides the bins don't give us any opportunity for automatic collection.
Yeah.
And the carts certainly do.
It's a, it's a win-win in my mind. It can help us increase our diversion, and it's going to help our crew be even safer and that by putting in a cart. going to help our crew be even safer. And that, by putting in a cart, it's, it's just that, it's where the collections add across the country. It's the next step, in my opinion.
Well, excellent. Well, Jake, thank you very much for this presentation. You know, one of the things I, I really appreciate about the times that you and your department come in front of us, and Arrow, this goes for you and the entire Public Works, too. It is the data-driven decision-making that you have. It, it makes it a lot easier for us to be able to make an educated decision up here, when we have the information that you're showing us, to be able to show us that if we do this, then this happens. And we've seen a lot of that here. I think this is a, I mean, this is, there's a lot of good in what you're saying here. There's a lot of great things. But then you're also pointing out some real challenges and ways that we can continue to look forward. But you said it best yourself, most of this is an opportunity to be able to really make changes that could be helpful for a community. You know, it's not lost on me, or I think any of us, that we're entering a time where it's going to be a difficult budget discussion that we're about to have at the beginning of next year. We'll avoid that for now, because, you know, we don't have to get to next year till next year. But it's, it's going to be a tough one. And as we think about ways that we can make progress on some of these things, a couple of things you pointed out really, really stuck with me. There are partners in this. We've got nonprofit partners that can help us to do this. We have the federal government that has programs directly to be able to assist with this, which means that we don't have to think about this only out of our own pocketbook as the only way to get this done. We should think as creatively as we can to try and make it happen, if it's something that is important to us. And I, I think based on the conversations I've heard at this desk, it seems like something that is. So I appreciate you sharing all this with us and sharing all this information. And with that being all we have here, there'll be no more business in this work session. We will stand adjourned. Thank you.